Commissioner Dawson.
Present.
Commissioner Lucas.
Present.
And Mayor Raney.
Present.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
And we're called to order. Commissioner Lucas, will you relate us in our prayer and pledge, please?
Please stand.
Bow your heads. Dear Lord, we just thank you for this night. We ask that you be with us as we conduct business for the city of Fairview, God. We ask that you also be with our students as they get ready to start school tomorrow, God. Protect them. Give them a good year. Be with the principals and the staff and the teachers, God, as they teach our children. Keep us safe in Fairview. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of agenda. Commissioner Dawson, did you tell me you wanted to make a change to the agenda?
That's correct, Mayor. To remove 11F.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the amended agenda?
Motion to approve the amended agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Raney.
Aye.
Item five, public hearings. Item six, citizens' comments.
There are none tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Item seven, public announcements. Mr. Ross, I bet that's you.
Good evening. First off, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out last Saturday. We had the back-to-school bash. Thank you to Mayor Raney, Commissioner Butler, and Commissioner Dawson for assisting with that. It was much, much help that was very needed. And we received many supplies from American Legion, Apex Bank, United Way, Ms. Williams, and Regions Bank as well. And we ended up donating approximately 550 backpacks, along with drawstring bags, to the students and the schools. And then on the next, the next city event that we have is not on the list. We just added it yesterday. It's Saturday, September 17th. It is the movie in the park will be showing the movie Lego. And it'll be at Bowie Park. And the movie time is at 8:00 PM for that evening. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Ross? I will say that Mr. Ross did bring some of the backpacks to the United Way office. So if anyone needs backpacks, they're there. Just give me a call and let me know so that I'll make sure that I'm there to give those out.
Can I ask one question? The tree lighting, do we have a time on that, that it starts?
That has not been set yet. I'll have that for you at the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Staff comments and monthly reports. Mr. Collins, are you going to wear all the hats tonight?
Yes, Mayor, I'll run through these reports for you. The first I have is the fire report. You'll notice on the first page, or once it flips, I'll kind of run down this, this page. Kind of interesting for us. Our calls, so far each month, with exception of January, we're down each month on fire calls, which is good for us. That's great for the community. So anytime we can see those reductions, you know, we are close in the month of June. But we're, we like the fact that those numbers are down. That's always good for us and the community if we have numbers that are down for, for police and fire. The next page, you'll see the May and June heat maps. They are substantially the same, May and June, although in May, I didn't, I didn't notice that there is a series of calls in the center of the page that are going to be on Highway 100 near where Apex Bank is, if you can, if you can see that in May, that the red spot, the red spot furthest to the right. I'm going to get some clarification on what, what that is. That's not really a typical area that you'll receive calls, especially if you look at May, the concentration of the calls is very similar to June, the concentration of calls. So I'll try to get some clarification on what that series of calls is, because it appears to be more than one. I want to make sure if there's something we need to address there, we do. But everything else is pretty consistent across both months with the number of calls and the heat map locations of those calls. The next page you have is just some basic information regarding extrication and an accident. Our firefighters with Williamson County at a fire call. And then one call, a smaller call over at the Williamson County Rec Center on the bottom right, where apparently a garbage can was lit or caught fire after a cigarette butt, which, hey, strange, strange things, but, but those things happen. The next page has a bit of information that is an outlier for us. But if you look at May of 2022, you'll see the incidents and calls that we have, 67 incidents for rescue and emergency medical service, that's the most, 67%. And most of the, most of those are support to Williamson County EMS. If you move over to the right to June, you'll see that we had five actual fires that we responded to in the city. And that's a big jump from, I don't recall us having five in any one month. So that, that's a bit of an outlier for the month, we hope. But it, everything else stayed relatively consistent with the exception of the number of calls that were fires. So I'll try and get some other explanation on that, except for we just had five fire calls. It just simply is, simply is what it is as a matter of service, and that's okay. The next page, training hours, standard training hours. There's nothing that, that jumps out on that. Obviously, we do standard trainings each months, each month, and we do some annual training specific, and that's what those trainings, training hours are, and those are fairly standard. The next page, you'll see May, six overlapping incidents, two automatic or mutual aid where we assisted another outside agency of Williamson County. And we had two members attend some confined space rescue class, or a confined space rescue class, which is always good for us. We had 200 interactions at four events for public education outreach. In June, we had 13 overlapping incidents, and an overlapping incident is where you're on one call and you receive another call. Two automatic mutual aid, four incidents where a fire was extinguished. Now, that would be reflected in two pages before, we had five fire calls. So we had five fire calls, four of those we had to extinguish, the other one, I assume was either out when we arrived or was not an actual fire call. And then one patient extrication, and that was on the, the photos that you saw two pages ago. On the next page, May, you'll see dispatch arrival time, four minutes and 49 seconds, average operating on scene time, 11 minutes and 55 seconds. In June, those numbers are up specifically, the average operating time on scene, and we attribute that to the number of fire calls that we had. Obviously, a fire call takes more time than a medical call or some other call, and that's what that is. So the increase in time on scene is specific to the fire calls that we had. They just take longer to service. Again, with the, with the Fire Department, if city residents are interested in smoke alarms or have an inspection, they can call the direct line for the Fire Department, 615-799-3473. We do that each month. And a standard reminder, if it's not an emergency, dial the regular number. If it is an emergency, please dial 911.
Are there any questions on the fire? Oh, I'm sorry.
Those are just some photos for your, for your pleasure, for some service done by the Fire Department during the previous two months.
Are there any questions about the fire report? Hearing none. Police report?
Yes, ma'am, the police report, the personnel report. We had training hours for the month of June of 213. The month of July, we had 184. That's pretty standard. If you look also at the overtime hours, we had more in June than we did in July, and our overtime hours are substantially lower than they were a couple of years ago when we made the change to our compensation plan. But those are standard trainings and hours generally for the month. We are fully staffed at 23 for, for the department. Next page, the calls for service total in July of 1,029, total in June of 986. Those are pretty consistent across the board of what we see annually and year over year. The next page, the number of arrests, June 91, July 81. You see the number of domestic calls, number of DUIs, number of drug charges, pretty consistent, and thefts remain low. Citations, 130 in June, 124 in July. Traffic accidents, 27 and 22. Most of those were property damage only. We did have five in June that were injury, two in July that were injury, and no fatalities in either month. The next page highlights the public, public relations just a little bit. As you're aware, we do a shop of the cop Christmas each year. We do that through donations and fundraising by the Police Department. So far, a total of $4,447.35 has been raised with the anticipated goal of $10,000. Of the outreach programs that we've had, the three movie in a park, movie in the park events have generated $566. The July 3 food tent brought in $3,043, and the July 3 silent auction brought in $838. All of that will go toward the $10,000 goal for Shop of the Cop. And lastly, we have a new police officer on staff, Morgan, Morgan Smith. We're glad to have her here. She's in training right now. We look forward to getting her here and in service full-time with the Police Department. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions I can with the Police Department.
So does the 44, 47 include those July totals?
It does, and other donations that we've had for there.
Okay.
So we're a little short halfway through the year, but there'll be a fundraising go late, fundraising efforts later in the year to, to attempt to raise that money.
Are there other questions about the police report?
I appreciate the addition of the picture of new employees, because that's awesome. I, I'd like to see that every time.
Sure.
So, yeah, that's great.
So, so that's fire and police report. I have three items for you tonight, other than that just under city manager report. Item number one is, you, you may recall that we are continuing to work on projects to complete the triage playground at Bowie Nature Park. Last week, or about 10 days ago, we were able to post the concrete work for all the sidewalks and work that need to be done. The fencing bid is on the website currently. So we, we're soliciting bids for that, and we have two local vendors we're going to send that out to directly to get some, some feedback from them. We, we look forward to getting that done, and we think we're going to be able to get those projects done in tandem or one right after the other. So we, as soon as the concrete work gets done, we should be able to start on the fence. And once the work gets done, it will kind of be an accelerated process to get those completed. So we look forward to getting, to getting those done. We do have a little bit of additional concrete work we need to do on the south entrance to the playground, the entrance that's closest to Bowie Nature, the nature center. But that will be a part of the concrete work that we do, so that shouldn't be anything of any issue with us. We just will make sure that we install the gate on that side, that it does meet all the standards that it needs to meet to be serviceable. Aside from that, those two items are in the works. We're still working on the signage. We have a little bit of design to do on there. We'll get that information out. But the larger projects, the concrete work and the fence, are on the website now for bid. So we look forward to getting those back. Grass and mowing, just a quick update. I had a question today and then a follow-up from someone specific to Veterans Park and the median. We contract that work out. We were in contact with the vendor of that work today. That, all of that work will be mowed by the end of the weekend. Because of the dry weather that we've had when, when they did mow, they mowed it a little higher, a little greater height than what had been done in the past in favor of making sure that the grass stayed healthy, we didn't burn anything up or cause any problems. Obviously, when you get some sporadic rain, that grows pretty quickly, and it's already a little higher than it would normally be. Our, our contractor was in communication with us today, and they'll get, have that stuff mowed by the end of the weekend, is what they told us. So we look forward to getting those few, those few things done. And that, that's just can be expected with the kind of the strange weather, weather pattern that we've had here lately, or really across the summer. And lastly, unrelated to any of this, but on Monday of this week, I started my seventh year of employment with the city. And if you look at the work that all of, all of the staff and elected officials have done over the last few years, it's encouraging. We have a lot of work to do, and I know that our staff is on board to do that. So we'll start off another year with another list and, and hopefully end the year with a few more projects completed and, and ready to start the next. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions on any of those, and if not, Mayor, that's the end of my report.
Thank you for taking care of the mowing question quickly. That's good. Thanks. Any other questions or comments for the city manager?
I have one. As, as, as it relates to Public Works, thank you for answering the question. I've had several people reach out about how high the grass is at Veterans Park, so that answers that. Is that the only contracted mowing that we have in the parks? Or do we have city employees mow?
So, so we, we have a hybrid of those. Our, that's contracted work to, to be done. Right now, our mowing staff, Keith and Justin, mow within the footprint of Bowie Park itself. That's their primary area that they mow and upkeep. We have two people doing that work. So everything else outside of that, except for City Hall, is contracted out. Keith and Justin do the footprint of the park, and they do City Hall. Everything else that we have, we contract out.
Okay. And the historic village?
It's, it's all contracted. The only thing our staff does is-
And so the people that do Veterans Park also do the historic village?
That's correct.
Because I've just had people reach out, and I'm just trying to get questions answered. There's one other thing. There's evidently a large limb over by the sign at the Westwood Elementary School. Who would be handling something like that?
I just have to ride by and look at it. It, it just depends on where it is, and I can go by and look at that tonight.
Okay. I've got just a few people who reached out about that, so.
Is it, do you know about where it is?
They said it's by, it, it's the, where the sign is, it's to the left of the sign.
As you pull into Westwood, it's on the, it's on the right-hand side, right past the sign. It appears to be on private property, I would think.
We'll, we'll check.
It looks like so much tree fell.
We'll check and see. Now, for me, with the tree that's fallen, so I know where that footprint is. And obviously, that's on private property. The roadway itself, Tiger Trail, is the city's, and there's some, a little bit of space on the outside of the curb, this is the city's. The street is, is ours. In fact, we resurfaced it this summer. Well, I'll go by and take a look. If it's ours, we'll be glad to clean it up. If not, we'll send a letter to whoever it is to make sure we help them get that done.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments? Item nine, consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Raney.
Aye.
Item 10, old business, there is none. Item 11A, new business ordinance 2022-24. Vice Mayor.
An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee by rezoning one acre of property located at 7269 Cox Pike, consisting of Williamson County Tax Map 042, HA Parcel 001.00, from RS40 residential to R20 residential. Property owner, Paul Harrison.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there anyone here to speak on that? Are you, Ms.?
Mr. Harrison, and I just wanted to say that I've already got Chapdane doing a survey. They started their work today. Hopefully, everything goes smooth like every, like I would like for it to, anyway.
So could you tell us what you're, what you're planning to do? What's the plan for that property?
We're planning, I've got a contract for someone to, to build a house out there. And I've got, like I said, when I was here before, I've got congestive heart failure, neuropathy, some other illness. Things, so that I, I can't really take care of that property back there, or not like, I don't use it for anything anymore since my dog died. That's what I had it in there for to start with.
Is there any questions from the board? Thank you, sir. Any other discussion from the board? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Mayor Raney.
Aye.
New business, item B, resolution 23-22.
Resolution calling for a public hearing on the proposed annexation of territory into the city of Fairview by owner consent and approval of a plan of service, 7348 Overby Road, 34 acres, map 046, parcel 050.00. Owners Herbert and Barbara King.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? And just keeping in mind, all this does is open this for a public hearing. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd like to talk just a little bit about this. So this, this property currently is M1. Is that correct?
In the county, it would be an MGA1 zoning, which is municipal growth area one zoning.
So they equal to our R40?
Correct, yes, ma'am.
Okay. So basically, this is, this is in our growth boundary. This is a situation where they could put one-acre lots, and we would have no control over this property because it's in, in Williamson County. That means they wouldn't have to abide by any of our infrastructure rules and regulations and ordinance. And that, that's, that's problematic to me. This is within our growth boundary, and I, I feel for us to have a little bit more control over what that neighborhood is going to look like so that it is consistent with the rest of our neighborhoods in the area. I, I would like to exercise a little bit more control, and this annexation is, is going to do that. So that's why I'm a yes voter on this.
I, I have a question, since you brought that up, that it's in the county. Are the county restrictions and codes lesser than the city of Fairview?
There wouldn't be curb and gutter. I think there's some question about stormwater. And then there was one other note that I had. Our, our interlocal agreement would have, if, if a one-acre neighborhood in Williamson County was to be developed there, our interlocal agreement, police and fire would service that area. And so I guess in my mind, the density or the use of the property, the impact of how many lots you could have on that property will not change with annexation, but the, the funding for services in the future that we might provide would.
So if it stays in the county, it's never going to be any smaller than a one-acre lot, right?
Ma'am, that's correct.
We presume that if a developer is wanting to bring it in, that they want to, they will want to then rezone that for smaller lots, or why not just leave it in one-acre lots? There's a question mark behind that.
We, we asked, the planning, one of the planning commissioners mentioned that, and we made reference of, the request in front of us is just an R40 zoning request, and so there's no discussion for a lesser or a higher-density project at this time. The annexation would have an R40.
But then the developer tell us that they were hoping to get 99 houses in that whole parcel?
She did. The, the, I think it's 17 acres or so total. There's a piece up in the top rectangle, and then that little triangle piece underneath is the same family property owner that are both, those two pieces are already in the city of Fairview as R40, and so that would be an additional piece to that.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion?
And just to reiterate what Mayor Raney said, we're just voting to bring this to a public hearing, which I encourage people to come to and speak about.
Any other discussion?
Just two more notes to hit, Mayor. The future use map does call for rural sediment, where R40 would be unacceptable, but I don't think that a higher-density would be an acceptable use. And there was a 6-3 planning commission vote for positive recommendation.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Raney.
No.
New business, item C, resolution 24-22.
A resolution authorizing the Fire Department of Fairview, Tennessee to participate in public entity partners, safety partners, matching grant program. Move for approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Mr. Collins, do you want to fill us in on some of that?
Yes, Mayor, the-
On some of these matching grants that we get, these are relatively small numbers. I believe the total grant for this is $4,000, which we buy equipment with the Fire Department, or for the Fire Department with that, our cost, I believe, will be $2,000. We have it budgeted already, and we apply for this and receive it just about every year.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Raney.
Aye.
New business, item D, resolution 25-22.
A resolution of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, designating a vehicle as surplus and authorizing its disposal.
Motion to approve.
You have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Raney.
Aye.
I apologize. Vice Mayor Anderson.
I'm so sorry.
No, you're fine.
Aye.
Mayor Raney.
Aye. Does that mean I get to vote twice?
Item E, resolution 26-22.
A resolution of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, Board of Commissioners to name the Park Operational Plan Committee as the Citizen Advisory Committee for the proposed park system master plan. Commissioner Dawson.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Commissioner Dawson, will you tell us what this means? This is the first of?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So back in November, we, we voted on a resolution to establish the Park Operational Plan Committee that was going to create a park operational plan for the city of Fairview. And part of the three recommendations, one of the recommendations was to have a company come in and help us and contract with that company to create that master plan for our three parks, the park systems. And what we're asking now is to allow that Park Operational Plan Committee to be the Citizen Advisory Committee to that company that we are going to contract with.
Typically, would that be city staff that was doing that? Mr. Collins?
Typically, no, Mayor. What, once this matter, once something like this is contracted, then it would go to the Board of Commissioners or some other agency or group that they selected. The staff at this point would simply coordinate the delivery of the plan, but the plan would be to the Board of Commissioners or whatever the governing body, whoever that is, for their acceptance and review. So I, so much like the, the 2040 plan that the city has, there was a steering committee that was established for that. And I think from, from what I'm hearing from Commissioner Dawson, and as I've crafted this, this is effectively a steering committee for the parks master, for the park master plan instead of the city's comprehensive plan, unless I'm misinterpreting something.
So the Board of Commissioners would still approve the park, the, the Park Operational Plan Committee would not approve, it would still come to the board for approval?
That's correct. There's nothing in this that states that the Park Operational Plan Committee would approve. I don't think they have the legal authority to approve it on behalf of the city. I think that pursuant to this resolution, they would have the ability to ask questions, have input, and present a total package, including the document, to the Board of Commissioners for overall approval of, of the plan, any suggestions that may be included in it or associated with it.
Repeat that one. Repeat that one.
This does not replace the Board of Commissioners' task and responsibility of approving and adopting the park system master plan. What this does is state that effectively the steering committee for the park system master plan is the Park Operational Plan Committee. That once this is voted on, and a vendor for the master plan is selected, then we, the staff, will direct that planner to the Park Operational Plan Committee, and the planner and that committee will work together until such time as the plan is ready to be delivered to the Board of Commissioners.
Mr. Dawson, so do you plan for, to kind of have an open discussion about what they're doing, kind of like the 2040 plan was? Or is it only going to be the Park Operational Committee who gets to work with, hear what they're thinking, give them, what are you thinking?
Yeah, my thoughts are to model it very much after the 2040 comprehensive plan, to have town hall meetings to get as much community input on what they would like to see for the park system. So, yes, everybody will be included. Every citizen in the city of Fairview will be included.
So, there will be open meetings, so all citizens can come and participate?
Absolutely.
And is there a budget involved with this? Or is it just an advisory committee that will report back?
So, there's no budget for the Park Operational Plan Committee, and there would not normally be. Now, once this gets underway, if there are going to be community meetings, community events, the planning, those sorts of things, then obviously, the city is going to have to fund those, if that's rental space or refreshments or activities, same as we did with the comprehensive plan. So, if we're going to rent a space for a community event, then the city would pay for the rental of that space. If obviously, that meeting takes place here, we wouldn't rent anything. But we would provide refreshments, activities, that's anything that we need to do to support those meetings.
So, are all the members of this advisory committee that's now going to take on advising for projects for the city, are they all citizens of the city of Fairview?
Yes. So, we have three open seats. I'll have to fill those seats. And all of the folks that are on the committee, and when we put that request out for committee members, every one of them were a member of the city, yes.
And I guess my next question is, was this a temporary committee? And if so, why are seats being refilled?
People have either moved, or we have, so one moved. One had to drop out for personal reasons, and another was actually appointed to the planning commission.
Mr. Potter? When does the work of this committee end? Which I would presume means that it would dissolve once the directives that were given to that committee is achieved? There's a question mark there.
I think that the problem of the resolution is that it's when the master, park master, park system master plan is adopted, right? So, that's the charge. It'd be the Citizen Advisory Committee for the park system master plan.
This resolution breathes life into the Park Operational Plan Committee. So, as it exists currently, previously, however that is determined, this resolution breathes life back into the Park Operational Plan Committee and designates them as the city's spokesgroup for this thing. The Park Operational Plan Committee Enabling Resolution that was prepared last year states that each member of the Park Operational Plan Committee must be a city of Fairview resident, not three-seven-oh-six-two, but a municipal resident of the city of Fairview. So, in that instance, the members of this committee would continue to have to be residents of the city of Fairview as presented by Commissioner Dawson and ratified by the board. And then, this resolution would simply breathe life into the committee, tasking them with being the city's representative group for the park master plan.
If the city has a Parks and Landscaping Committee, would that not be kind of more what their tasks should be, since that is an ongoing, permanent city committee?
That is a board discussion. I could not answer that. That's a board debate.
Okay.
So, my, excuse me, Mayor, if I could. My question is, is the Parks Operational Plan Committee still a committee today, per the resolution?
I think once, I think once the delivery of the recommendations from the park and, or the Park Operational Plan Committee, I think once those, that delivery of those recommendations, including this plan, I think that substantially completed that task. This document, whether or not it completed the task, this document, again, breathes life into that committee, continues its existence, and affords it the opportunity to be the representatives for this, for this task.
But I guess my question is, prior to tonight, if that committee has already completed its task, and that committee no longer exists, we are saying that we're going to take a committee that no longer exists and make them something else?
I think in theory, even if everyone agreed that it did not exist, and I'm not suggesting it does or does not. I think even if everyone agreed that it does not exist, this simply recreates it. There will be nothing wrong if it existed and it had ten tasks left to do, or it closed out all of its tasks. There's nothing improper about a continuing resolution that would allow that committee to continue with an additional task. So, I think in name, it's proper to be moved forward. And obviously, if there are previous members there, they will continue as well as a part of this.
So, if it moves forward tonight, the Parks Operational Plan Committee no longer exists and becomes the Citizens Advisory Committee?
I don't believe that's, I think this is just an extension of the Park Operational Plan Committee.
So, it'll essentially be two committees?
No, sir. I think it would be the same Park Operational Plan Committee, and I think this document simply adds another task to that committee, pre-existing or post-existing. I think this document simply adds a task to that committee.
And for the, my final thing, for the three, you said three seats are open?
That's correct.
So, of the three seats that are open, Commissioner Dawson, you appoint those people, you and you alone?
Yep.
Well, if I recall, that the Enabling Resolution for the Park Operational Plan Committee granted the acceptance of applications and the vetting of candidates for that to Commissioner Dawson. And then Commissioner Dawson presented those candidates to the Board of Commissioners for ratification and appointment to the board.
That's correct.
So, in this instance, if there are vacancies, if this resolution is passed tonight, then the Park Operational Plan Committee, as previously enabled, would have an additional task, and it would be this park master plan task. If there are vacancies, then unless there's something else voted on by the board, if there are vacancies, then we would go through the same process for the advertising of members to that committee. Those would go to Commissioner Dawson. He would interview those candidates or vet them in some manner, present that listing of names to the Board of Commissioners for approval to that committee. So, the actual appointment to the committee would be done by the Board of Commissioners at the names or from the names provided to the Board of Commissioners by Commissioner Dawson.
Any other discussion? Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Ma'am, thank you. Just my two cents, when, I guess when we formed this POPC committee, that was kind of my vision, I saw, was they would see it out through to a park's master plan, kind of be the citizen engagement committee. They've done a great job engaging the Friends, engaging the Legion, engaging the equestrian community, several different groups that would be involved in the parks, and kind of feel like they have their finger on the pulse of everyone's ideas and visions. And then, we would need some citizens and volunteer involvement if the company that we engage decides to have town halls and open halls and inputs. I kind of always kind of envisioned that group kind of seeing it to the final proposal to us.
I kind of see our Parks and Landscaping Board as a group of volunteer citizens, too.
I agree, but I think this committee was specifically created for this task, you know, to kind of take it on.
Any other discussion?
Yes, Mayor. As a member of the Parks and Landscape Board, we were going to ask if it was okay to have Commissioner Dawson out to one of our meetings, since we're both on the board. I'm asking that of you, Mr. Potter. Is there an issue with us in the same meeting?
I don't think so.
Okay, because?
Minimally, you would just simply advertise the meeting publicly.
Okay. And I just think that the POPC committee that is overseen by Commissioner Dawson just brings in more information from the public and joins the different groups, whether it be the veterans or the, you know, people in the park, the Friends of the park, the citizens. It just kind of brings all that together, so when we meet, what Commissioner Dawson has come up with and what their group has come up with, they can bring it to the Park and Landscape Board so that we can have a discussion together. So, I think it's been a benefit, in my opinion.
Mayor, I have one more ask, and I would like just to kind of throw this out to the BOC, just to, for discussion and your thoughts. So, when we first thought about the makeup of the POPC committee, we wanted to allow everybody the opportunity in the city of Fairview to kind of have their voice. And so, we asked folks that were either on a committee already or a part of a group that were involved with some form of the park not to submit their name. And I think we're to a point now that, now that we can actually form this comprehensive plan, we still have three people from the original POPC committee, but we have an opportunity now to put three additional people on.
Okay, wait a minute. We have a motion and a second on the floor to approve this resolution. This sounds like we're going off on another, in a different direction?
This is discussion, yeah. So, this is just discussion. And we may amend, but just discussion. So, these three additional positions that we have, so currently, we said you have to be a citizen. You can't be involved with any of the partners that we have already established, like the American Legion, the Friends, and so forth. I wonder if we do go a step further now, and these three positions that we have open, we have someone from the Historical Society to represent Triangle. We have somebody from the American Legion to represent the Veterans Park. And we have a representative from Friends of Bowie Nature Park to represent the Friends. That can be on the steering committee. Just discussion for the board.
Mr. Potter, do we need to do the, address the motion and the second first?
We have a motion and a second on the floor, unless someone wants to amend the, the person who made the motion wants to amend their motion. I can't remember who that was.
Mr. Collins?
To clean it up, so it's not muddied within this thing, because this document references the Park Operational Plan Committee, as previously established for where we are.
Correct.
So, to keep it clean, and when I say clean, understandable, because forever's a long time, we want to make sure we understand how we arrived at where we did. My advice would be, take your vote on this matter you have before you, and settle this. And then, the second item would be to consider amending the motion, the Enabling Resolution for the Park Operational Plan Committee to include representatives from those bodies. That way, there's a clear definition of what the Park Operational Plan Committee is made up of going forward, and a clear designation of the task as it relates to the park system master plan. I think if we don't do that, and I understand that amending a previous resolution sounds a little more difficult right now, but it's much cleaner when you have the two completed documents in front of you. So, my suggestion would be, consider the matter you have before you as a motion and a second. And then, if that's successful, go back and amend the previous, the Enabling Resolution. We don't have the number for you, but we can certainly identify what that is, and you craft the language however you choose if you get there.
So, the next resolution would be to amend the makeup of the board?
If it's the privilege of the board.
Right, I understand.
Can I ask a question real quick of the original? Okay, so, it says to name the Park Operational Plan Committee as the Citizen Advisory Committee. Would it not be better stated as a Citizen Advisory Committee, instead of the? Because it seems like that's changing it from one to the other, and not this is the name and it is a Citizen Advisory Committee.
Here's why I would encourage against.
Okay.
Changing, okay?
Question.
So, if it changes from the to a, or an, then it's ambiguous. Who is the next, or who is the other? Who's the bus driver of the park's master plan? Because if the Park Operational Plan Committee is a, or a steering committee, or an advisory committee, that lends to the discussion of, are there other steering committees or advisory committees?
Okay, so the name's not going to change, it's just stating that?
It is the advisory committee.
Right. What you're doing here is naming the Park Operational Plan as the advisory committee for the master plan.
Okay.
The next item, if we get to that point, would simply be amending the Enabling Resolution stating what additional members, or the membership requirements for the Park Operational Plan Committee would be. If we change this from the, the committee to a or an committee, then that's ambiguous as to, are there other committees? And do we have competing oversight or guidance as it relates to the master plan? So, if this, if the park operational plan is going to engage in this thing, then I think they need to be identified as the advisory group for this thing to prevent it from becoming debatable in the future.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, you call the roll, please.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Mayor, I would like to make a motion to amend the Enabling Ordinance of the makeup of the Parks Operational Plan Committee to include the ability to include members of active groups, such as the Friends, the American Legion, or Historic Committee.
And does that, okay, is there a second? I'm sorry, I was getting ready to start discussion before. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second on the floor. Does that also include that those representatives should be citizens of the city of Fairview? Or would that still hold over from their original makeup?
Do you have a motion and a second on the floor, so you can craft it whichever way you like? The only clarification I would have, and I know we're busy all this, it was an Enabling Resolution, not an ordinance. So, and I know we have so much language going back and forth. So, just for clarification, I believe the motion intent was to amend the Enabling Resolution.
Okay.
Which I believe is correct, and I believe there's a second on that. So, with that, you'll just simply, if, unless something is stated specific to residency, residency would still apply.
Okay, so it would apply as the original?
Correct. So, you're effectively removing the prohibition that someone has previously served on another committee. You're allowing servants on a previous committee to serve on this committee. You're not removing the requirement that they be a city of Fairview resident, unless you state specifically that you're removing it.
Okay.
Mayor, if I could, well, all the committees, organizations that we mentioned, Friends of Bowie, American Legion, who was the other one?
Historical Association.
So, will one person from each of those be on, according to this amendment? Or can it be potentially three people from the American Legion, or two people from the American Legion, and one from one of the other groups? Is the wording going to be that there's one from each one?
Is the, is the wording going to be that there's one from each one?
The intent would be one from each one, but I did specifically try and leave it open if case one didn't want, or didn't have someone. But the idea would certainly be one from each one.
So it's not required, but if, so if there's, like, let's say for instance, there's not anybody from the Friends that wants to serve, it's not required, they're just being offered a seat?
That's right, and we would have to approve those names. So if Mr. Dawson brings them in here, and he's got three from one group, we can harass him and ask him why.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll?
A quick question before the roll. Is the, is the Fairview Historical Association a city group? Is it run through the city? Okay, it's, it's separate from city, okay. That's what, that was my question, sorry. Vice Mayor, excuse me, Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Mayor Rennie?
Aye.
Item 12, Communications from the Mayor and Commissioners. Commissioner Butler, since I've picked on you during the workshop, I'll let you go first.
Thank you, Mayor. Best of luck, and congratulations to all the students and teachers starting tomorrow. And thank you, Mr. Collins, for six solid years, and, and best of luck for year seven. And thank you for, for all your time and dedication and service to, to this community.
Glad to do it.
Thanks.
Vice Mayor? I'm sorry, was that the end? Vice Mayor?
I'm just grateful to the citizens who reach out. And I always say at the end of my comments to help keep Fairview beautiful by picking up and not throwing out trash. But also, I've had a lot of people reach out to me about, you know, long grass, lots that are not kept up. And I know that the city is wanting to start taking a look at that more and just kind of policing that, so that's encouraging on that end. Also, as a public service announcement, we have blue mailboxes throughout the community. And with our local post office not operational at the moment, be aware, if they're overfull, please do not leave your mail in those, because it can spill out onto the sidewalk or street, and you don't want something lost that way. So I encourage you, at the ti, at this time, the post office in Bonn Aqua, our mail employees are at that location. If you go straight down Highway 100 to where 46 and Highway 7 meet, at that intersection, you make a right. It's approximately three miles up on the right, next to the Dollar General store. I have pictures that I'm going to post on Facebook. I know there are people who don't have Facebook. So if you don't, please tell your neighbors that, that post office is, you know, if you have a PO box at the post office here, you'll want to pick up your items there. They have a special window for our community, for the citizens of Fairview, who have PO boxes at the post office right now until it is operational again. Just find an alternative if you see that box is too full, because you don't want your mail to, you know, fall on the street or sidewalks and not get to where it needs to go. And if you need, you know, any information about that, please feel free to call me. That's all, thank you.
Mr. Lucas?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say congratulations to Mr. Collins. As a Commissioner, thank you for the work that you've done over all these years. I know a lot of it goes, citizens don't see it all. But in my six years here, I can tell you there is a drastic improvement. I know that the, the staff greatly appreciate your leadership. I know you would say that it's a team effort, but, and, and they would agree with that, but they also can admire your leadership. And so, and on a personal level, I am grateful for your friendship over these years. That has meant a lot to me, and so congratulations. As well, I mentioned it earlier in my, in my prayer, but schools starting tomorrow, I wish all the kids well, to those mamas and daddies that are sending their babies off to school for the first time, or some for the last first, first day of school. Hang in there, it gets, it gets better, gets easier. And then tonight, or today, we had an election here in, in Fairview. The results have not come in yet, but congratulations to everyone whose name was on that ballot, and just stepping up to the plate to make a difference. Win or lose, in my opinion, it takes a lot to just put your name on a ballot. So congratulations to those people, pray for them as they work to lead us in our community or in our state. So that's all I have tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Dawson?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Collins, thank you for your leadership for all of these years. You know, it's, it's always neat to think back when you have a work anniversary, where we were, where we have come, and everything in between, right? And nothing is perfect, but every time I look at the budget, I see your fingerprints over that budget. And I, I see where we have transitioned from when I first got here in the city of Fairview, almost eight years ago, to where we are today. And it has been a very positive thing. You, your position, you being here, has been a very positive impact for the city of Fairview, so thank you. So, man, school beginning. I took, right before I came here, I took my middle schooler to get his locker, to get his homeroom assignment, and start that process. He's number four of our four kids, so our last one. We're having a bunch of lasts in our family. So last time, I am super excited about Friday Night Football. It's almost here, so some big things that are about to happen. I certainly pray for all of the kids going back to school. I pray for all of the teachers, the administrators, the, the helpers, the staff at school, for the, the amazing things they do for our kids. That's all I have, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Collins, I know that Commissioner Lucas and I came to this board, and we were just finished the bank holding checks, so payroll went bounce. We had to pay for a new radio system that I remember sitting at that table thinking, we'll never get that paid for. So I appreciate what you have done, the time you have been here, the work you have done, the leadership you have given all of us. If we could just get you to say, roll tide, I think you'd probably be a perfect employee.
Mayor, I'm, I'm really suffering from some COVID symptoms right now, so I need to, I really need to reserve comments going, I don't think I could, that's going to sound more like a cough than anything that would be appropriate, and I don't think I should do that.
Thank you.
But we do have a good group, a good team, as you all know. Commissioner Dawson mentioned where we were, all those things. I don't think any of us knew really where we were.
We suspected.
I, I, I think it was just kind of this, this thing. But the, the truth is, we have about 60 people who work here, and those 60 people I wouldn't trade. And if you look at the electric group we have today, the group that we've had before, and where everyone's gone, just as a team generally, it, it is absolutely a team process for everybody. There, you have buying from the staff. You, as elected board, obviously have decisions to make. Those would be financial, planning, whatever the case may be. But as I mentioned to someone earlier, there are a whole lot of places in this country who would love to be Fairview, Tennessee today. And I think as long as we stay on that task, it's easy for people in the community to look around and see what's wrong with something. And listen, I've been here for six years, I can point out a lot of things that are wrong, and we're, we still have improvements to make. It's a more difficult task to ride around and be proud of what's right. And Fairview's in a position where if we do this right, then we're in a much better position to promote what's right than bemoan what is wrong. And I think if we stay on task with that and look forward, if we think there are people who'd be glad, excited to be Fairview today, what Fairview will be 10 years from now will be even more envious if we just continue on the path. We have a lot of challenges, we have things to work on, but those are opportunities. And I just don't think that's difficult for us, so. As, as much as all the appreciations go around, believe me, it, it is more than one-sided. It's a lot of different directions, and we have a whole lot of people to thank. So just look forward to seeing where we are. Whenever all of this is said and done, and we, we get to look back at all that was accomplished, in, in a good way. And I look forward to seeing it, so.
Thank you, sir. Okay.
I just, I was asked to mention this, and I'm sorry, I forgot. Fairview is hosting the football jamboree on August the 12th, which would be before our next meeting, so I need to mention it tonight. Fairview is playing Harpeth at 7:30, but we are hosting the entire jamboree here at our high school. So that's a big deal.
Anything else? Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We're adjourned.